Hammond City Council Public Hearing is in October eighth, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P. M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Divatieri.
Present.
Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance of the Hammond City Council amending the official zoning map for the following addresses along. Hewitt Road, five one five Hewitt Road, amending from MXN and MXC to MXN. Zero point one nine acres in rear of five one five Hewitt Road, amending from RS eleven point A to MXN. Five fifteen and a half Hewitt Road, amending from MXN dash N and MXC to MXN. Five thirteen Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MX dash N. Four eleven Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MXN. Charles Barshers.
Thank you. This is one that was originally just a few council meetings back. It was tabled at the direction of the council with the recommendation that the zoning be changed from MXC to MXN. The property owners agreed to do that. Is there someone here to speak on this?
Hi. Thank y'all for seeing me.
Could you give us your name and city, please?
Charles Walker, one nine five Laurent Road, Madison, Louisiana, seven zero four four seven. We were asked a few months back to choose which one of the commercial zonings we had because it was kind of split into. Originally chose MXC and we were asked to choose, change that to MXN. So we're in the process over the last few meetings of moving it to the MXN. And I request that, do we grant that, please?
Anyone from the public on this item? Thank you. Item number two.
An ordinance to increase the mileage rates, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year twenty twenty-four. And when collected, the revenue from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said mileage rates are general alimony, general fund, adjusted rate eight point seven three mils. Twenty twenty-four levy, zero point zero four zero mils. Fire, police, adjusted rate nine point six five zero mils. Twenty twenty-four levy, twen- ten thousand mils. Public Works, adjusted. Adjusted rate, one point nine three zero mils. Twenty twenty-four levy, two point zero mils. For a total of twenty point three one mils, adjusted mils, and twenty-one point zero four zero uh twenty twenty-four levy mils. Charles Barsher.
Again, this is one that introduced at the last meeting. It's more of a housekeeping issue. There were some changes to state laws about how to adopt these rates. The council had previously approved these rates back in July. We were notified after we submitted everything to the state for approval that we had missed a new public notice requirement. So we've, we've done the additional public notice. We're bringing it back to the council to, to approve these rates. That again, were originally applied, approved back in July.
Anyone from the public? Number three.
An ordinance requiring quarterly financial reports be provided to the city council at the second city council meeting following the end of each quarter. Councilman Andrews.
I'm going to table this item until our next, until our next meeting. Hammond City Council regular session agenda, October the eighth, twenty twenty-four, five thirty-four P. M. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatieri.
Here.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Stand for our prayer, please. Eternal Father, we thank you right now that you, we ask that you continue to touch our hearts, touch our minds right now, Father God. We ask that you continue to give us the peace that's a path of all understanding. We come at this hour right now, Father God, just to tell you thank you, thank you for another day's journey. We ask that you continue to bless our city, state, and our country, continue to bless our administration, continue to bless the staff, the mayor and his staff, continue to bless our fire department, our police department. At this time, Father, I ask that you look down from the mayor's mother-in-law right now, Father. You the physician to touch her body right now. I ask that you continue to bless this council right now. Each member of their families and their districts in which they represent. But you would continue to give us wisdom and knowledge from on high to continue to lead our city forward. If there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. We just thank you right now for your grace and your mercy. We thank you that everything this evening will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you would get all glory, all honor, and all praise because it all belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. At this time, I ask that all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go forward in our meeting, I ask that when you step to the microphone, please give your name and the city where you're from and the zip code, please. Also, our mayor had an emergency. He was here and he had to leave. A family emergency, so I'm just letting the public know, uh, he had to leave in his absence. At this time, can I get an approval of our minutes from our September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Also, when you approach the microphone to give your name and your zip code and the city where you're from, please speak clearly into the mic and remember that you will be up under a three-minute warning. Final adoption ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance of the Hammond City Council amending the official zoning map for the following addresses along Hewitt Road, five one five Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MX dash N. Zero point one nine acres in the rear of five one five Hewitt Road, amending from RS eleven point A to MX dash N. Five one five and a half Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MX dash N. Five thirteen Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MX dash N. Four eleven Hewitt Road, amending from MX dash N and MX dash C to MX dash, dash N. Charles Barsher.
This is the one that we just discussed, and for anyone's reference, MXN is the more neighborhood-friendly version of commercial zoning.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council. Second.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption ordinance number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to increase the mileage rate, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rate on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year twenty twenty-four. And when collected, the revenue for said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said mileage rates are general alimony, general fund, adjusted rate eight point seven three zero mils. Twenty twenty-four levy, nine point zero, I'm sorry, general alimony, general fund. Twenty twenty-four levy, nine point zero four zero mils. Fire, police, adjusted rate nine point six five zero mils. Twenty twenty-four levy, ten thousand mils, or ten point zero zero mils. Public Works, adjusted rate, one point nine three zero mils. Uh, twenty twenty-four levy, two point zero 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 mils. For a total of twenty point three one mils for adjusted rate, and twenty twenty-four levy, twenty-one point zero four zero mils. Charles Barsher.
Again, this is just a housekeeping matter to adopt the rates that were previously approved.
Anyone from the council on this item? Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council, make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance number three.
It was tabled. Final adoption of an ordinance requiring, excuse me, quarterly financial reports be provided to the city council at the second city council meeting following the end of each quarter.
I'll make a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request by Mitch Creighton on behalf of Hammond Cypress Crossing, Inc., to approve the Cypress Crossing subdivision, lots one dash four, one four, G one, G two, G three, originally presented by Red LLC, located in block ninety-seven of the hypersurvey, section twenty-five, T six S dash R seven E, Greensburg Land District, with the following conditions in accordance with the final plat by William J. Bowden, Jr., dated August second, twenty eighteen, in accordance with the as-built by Max J. Bowden, Inc., dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And number three, with revocation of the most westerly portion of unimproved East Park Avenue right-of-way, shown as lot fifteen, measuring fifty-four by ninety-two, on the final plat by William J. Bowden, Jr., dated Aug- August second, twenty eighteen. Number four, with acceptance of a two-year maintenance letter of credit for street, water, sewer, and lighting. And number five, with acceptance of a one-year performance letter of credit for sidewalks. Recommended three, three to zero for approval by the zoning commission. Charles.
Uh, this is the introduction. Again, this is just a public notice that if introduced tonight by the council, there will be an opportunity over the next couple of weeks for everyone to review this project, this, this information, formulate any questions you might have, get those to us in advance, or appear at the public hearing to, to, to actually address those before the council. Uh, this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the September twenty-sixth meeting, which was a rescheduled meeting because of the hurricane. Anyone?
Do we, do we put a, a sign up for us, or no, for our public meetings? I know they do it for planning and zoning.
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious. There's been people who've asked questions about this, so that's fine, letting them have notice.
So what happens after this, if you approve the introduction, it goes to public hearing, and I have to put a sign out at the location?
Perfect. Also, it should say higher survey instead of hyper in the third line. It's, it's in the planning and zoning that way as well?
Well.
Anyone else having other questions on this item? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a request for annexation to High Park LLC and Edson Group Limited Partnership to annex six point nine acres located on High Park Boulevard in accordance with the survey by Andrew Fowler dated August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, and to be zone I dash L. Recommended three, zero for approval by the zoning commission. Charles.
This is another item that, again, is being introduced tonight. If the council approves it, there'll be a public hearing in about two weeks where the public can come and comment on it. Use that time to review the information, formulate questions, get those to us in advance if you can, or appear at that meeting during the public hearing. Uh, this was also considered at the September twenty-sixth, rescheduled Planning and Zoning Commission, and approved three, zero by the, the commission.
Anyone having any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Astain.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Plan It Clothing Company, held on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve P. M. to seven P. M. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two hundred West Charles Street, Alec Griffin.
So Alec is, Alec is not here? Okay. I'll come back to this item. If not, I'll remove it or table it. Let's go down to resolution number three, because I see he's on number two as well.
A resolution one, accepting twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cent grant from the Patrick Lay Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase new and replacement body armor for Hammond Police Officers, approving a twenty, uh, number two, I'm sorry, approving a twenty-seven thousand one fifty-nine point ninety-four cash match for the Hammond Police Department, and three, authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and signed related documents. Charles Barsher.
This is one of those grants that we apply for every year. Um, the way this works is that the grant provides fifty percent of the funding, and the police department provides fifty percent of the funding. So the match is always based on the dollar amount. This particular federal agency likes to do it to the cents, which is why the, the, the resolution reads the way it does. We're asking the council to approve so we can replace some, uh, older body armor vests for the officers.
Anyone from the public on resolution number three? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of twenty-seven bulletproof vests for Hammond Police Officers from Parrotts at a cost of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-four cent under state contract four four zero 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 two five eight two six. The purchase will be made with nineteen thousand two hundred and forty, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cents in FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three bulletproof vest partnership grant funds, and nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-four point forty-seven dollars in matching funds from the Hammond Police Department.
This is actually similar to the previous one, but unrelated. These are two existing grants that we received in fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. The previous resolution was for, for new money, which is actually fiscal year twenty-four, federal fiscal year twenty-four money. Every, every five years, our vests come up for replacement. Um, that allows us to purchase newer vests. They're often lighter, more comfortable, um, encourages the officers to wear them, provides better protection. So this time, we're, we're purchasing twenty-seven bulletproof vests for those officers whose vests are coming up for the mandatory replacement. We're using roughly nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars in existing grant dollars. They'll be matched by roughly the same in, uh, police department funds, which are already matching the projects.
Anyone from the public on resolution number four? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number five.
A resolution supporting the submission of a sixteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollar application to the Edward Boyne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase portable radios for the Hammond Police Department. Charles.
This is another one of those federal grants that we apply for every year. Um, we're actually fortunate to receive a federal allocation. Um, our federal allocation this year was sixteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Um, what we have to do is submit an application for eligible items. Um, the last few years, we've been submitting applications for radios. Most of the portable radios that are in service with the police department were purchased after Hurricane Katrina around two thousand six or seven. So they're in desperate need of replacement. We've replaced about thirty or forty to, actually, more than that. We've replaced over forty radios, more than half of the radios that are needed with grant funds to date. Um, this would allow us to purchase another ten, nine to ten radios.
Anyone, excuse me, anyone from the public on this particular line item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received on ten, three, twenty twenty-four for Mary's Alley improvements, FY twenty twenty-four, project number four two zero dash one two four zero seven. Jay Pittman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As y'all will see, uh, we have the bid summary for Mary's Alley. Uh, we opened bids on Thursday, October the third. We had six total bidders. Uh, the low bid being Richard Price Contracting in the amount of three hundred thirty-seven thousand thirty-five dollars and zero cents. Uh, so I recommend award to Richard Price in that amount.
This was, uh, within budget?
Yes. It's actually, uh, a little bit under budget.
All right. Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council?
Yes, that'll be me now. Mr. Jay, thank you so much, sir. One thing I can say about Mr. Jay, when it come to District Three, he know how passionate I am. And I'm very much involved in everything that's going on. So I just want to tell you thank you, and I appreciate it that it's coming under bid. But that extra money, I need, we need to sit down and talk about that extra money. But thank you too. Once again, I appreciate everything, uh, y'all group, uh, have when it comes to District Three. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Council, Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received on ten, three, twenty twenty-four for Mooney Avenue Pedestrian Bridge, project number four two zero dash one two five zero eight. Jay Pittman.
Good evening. Um, this is also for District Three. It's Mooney Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. Uh, we received five bids. The low bid being Lawson-Bonnet Construction in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars and zero cents. Uh, Lawson-Bonnet is a local contractor that has performed work for the city before. I recommend award to Lawson-Bonnet Construction in that amount, one thirty-eight, nine hundred and zero cents.
Anyone from the public? Council members, anyone? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divatieri.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jay. Resolution number eight.
A resolution of the Hammond City Council providing a scope for its investigation of the building department and for incidental matters. Councilman Divatieri.
Yeah, this is a scope of work, uh, put together. This was the, regarding the investigation that, uh, we voted for a few meetings back regarding the building department office. The, uh, scope was, uh, is what I was presenting right here to, to, uh, get together and, uh, hopefully, uh, solicit for some, um, companies and, uh, third parties that, that, uh, could, could actually, you know, take care of this investigation for us.
You know? Excuse me. Anyone from the public?
Councilman, if I may, I'd like to just make some observations. I, I've been over, oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Mike Bornholdt, eight oh five Delmore, seven zero four zero three. I know how, how government usually drags their feet. This investigation hopefully will be done in a pronto fashion instead of us talking about this for the next three or four meetings. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sal Nicolosi, thirty-six oh seven, O. W. one ninety west, Hammond, Louisiana. On this resolution, I'm in favor of it because, uh, you know, the, the city's got to be responsible for the dollars that they spending. And I've been coming to this meetings now over two or three years. And I think now y'all, the city council is kind of getting things together to find out where the money's being spent, and who's spending the money, and why. So, uh, I thank y'all for doing that, and like the gentleman said earlier, let's not make it take two years to do this, okay? Thank y'all.
Bill Dangerfield, uh, Hammond, Louisiana, seven oh four oh three. I am here again with the Villa West, uh, issue that we have. And I'm hoping that it doesn't take any longer either, because I'm kind of getting tired of coming up here. And we need to have an answer, Sam. We're looking to get an answer on what happened in our community, you know, based on, um, the city failing us, not getting what should have been done through the zoning and boarding, zoning and board. So hopefully, we can get that resolved, and we all can kind of rest assured it won't happen again.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Trey Welch, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven zero eight, uh, zero two. I know y'all have seen Chris in here a few times. Um, one of the problems that we're having that's come up here very recently is that I've been representing Chris through his lease problems and stuff like that. But how it's germane to what y'all are dealing with right now is we have a building that's on airport property that we don't have a lease, but every building inspection has been done. It's been completed. Everything's done. Only thing else is an occupancy permit that has nothing to do with whether there's a lease or not a lease. It's whether or not the building is suitable and has passed inspections, and it has. And I've got emails from Mr. Andre Kudrain. We've been talking with one another. But we've come to a position where they've told us that we can either accept the lease as it's been written, which is in excess of what y'all have authorized. So either accept an illegal lease with the provisions that are unpalatable, and you're not getting a occupancy permit unless you sign it. Now, that's a problem. So I look forward to having this conversations more whenever we get. So I look forward to having this conversations more whenever we get to the point of actually talking about rates and fees and charges and things like that, that we've been dealing with, with the lease. There's obviously, and I'll leave you with this, y'all have the ability to set what the fees are. If I go down the road and I run a stop sign, and y'all have set it at, let's say, a hundred dollars, but I show up in court, and all of a sudden, I've got to pay a hundred and fifty dollars. That's not right, and you don't have to have a law degree to know that that's not right. So if y'all have set a maximum, I'd not have to pay more than what y'all have set, and that's where we are right now. So thank y'all. And we can get a permit.
Hold up one minute. Mr. Charles, you know anything about this?
Yes. So I don't want to belabor this, the lease rate that's in the lease agreement that's been furnished by the city through its city attorney is twenty-one cents per square foot. That, that lease rate was authorized by this council in two thousand and one.
So may I, I don't mean to cut you off, but, so the lease rate in two thousand and one was set at twelve?
Twelve cents plus an annual CPI adjustment.
That is correct. However, you revisited in two thousand and fifteen.
In two thousand and fifteen, the only change, the only change was the fuel flow charge. The ordinance is very clear.
No, they, actually, it is not very clear, because it says twelve cents. It doesn't go back and say, it should have been.
The ordinance from two thousand and fifteen mentions only the fuel flow charge.
It's reenacted.
No, it's not.
Yes, okay. Anyway, my point being is that here we are, and the fact is, is that the ordinance is very clear as to it's twelve cents plus CPI. That's what it is. And we're being asked to do more than that, but again, still not being given any type of background on how they even arrived to that. That's the problem. There's no transparency, and that's the problem that y'all have to set as a body, and whether or not that was actually done whenever y'all revisited the ordinance and increased the flowage fee, to also say, you know what, we're going to stay, but, but that still doesn't, if that, if you take with what was being said just now for facts, that doesn't explain why tie downs are being charged at a higher rate than what was authorized in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and one. They have been increased these fees, they increased the flowage fees in June, effective July first, without coming to y'all, by ten cents per every gallon. Not authorized, but put it in place. Same with tie downs, same with hangar rental, same with landing fees, same with all of those things, they have increased without authority from y'all.
Who signed off on the building permit? You said you had a building permit over there?
We actually have built the building completely, so we've got an electrical, we've gotten plumbing. All our contractors have actually put, pulled the permits, built it. The city has actually put water going to the hangar, so it's not like they didn't know what was going on.
And then the building permit office never requested any, any type of lease or anything from y'all, executed the lease, you know, before y'all started or anything?
No, sir.
Another question I asked while you up here was, has that meeting been set yet that the airport board, airport board meeting that they have once, I guess y'all, do they have it once a month or, or so, and then, and then the?
I believe it hasn't.
Has it been notified to the, to the public yet? I don't know who's in charge of that.
I believe it's scheduled for Thursday, this Thursday.
This Thursday? Have y'all did public notice or make sure that?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
To the people?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Yeah, as far as I know, it has. I'm not aware. I do think I was just given something saying that it was put, that was, started to be put on the council's website maybe, or something like that, that, that was the first time that's ever happened, though, to my knowledge.
Is it put on there? You should know, Charles, administration.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I know that there's.
The city website, the agenda is not attached yet.
Okay.
Which that's been another problem as far as public notice in the past. That's something that has come to my attention, that the public notice that has, should have been put in place, has not been faithfully adhered to over the years.
Well, I'm speaking for myself here, but as a councilman, but I, I don't really want to see this coming back to this council until the, the agenda is posted properly, whatever the guidelines are, and making sure that everyone who needs to, you know, be notified of that meeting with the, affiliated with the airport knows about it, so they can have their discussions like they should have had before it came to us last meeting, so regarding all the, the rate increases and details, so.
And the only thing that we'd ask is that since an occupancy permit and all the building, all the building permits were validly pulled, they were completed, the last inspection was done, permitting has nothing to do with leases. We'd ask that we get the occupancy permit, and then we still deal with the lease. We were given the option that we can either tear it down at our expense, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing, that we want to be in the city of Hammond and do business here, and we're given, you either sign it what we've given you, or else.
Well, y'all have another issue, but that's another reason why this investigation is so important, because, I mean, I think that should be policy of some type of protocol whenever you're in the building office giving permits to building structures on the city property without having a lease executed before construction is started, that should be one of the, the checklist on a to-do list before you start. I mean, that's, you know.
So sir, who, who told you you couldn't, who told you you couldn't get the license to shout sign the lease?
The attorney.
So an occupancy certificate gives you a right to occupy. If you don't have a lease, you don't have a right to occupy, just like if you don't own the property, you don't have a right to occupy. If you don't have a lease, you don't have a right to occupy. And then, and the options given to the tenant, or given to the owner, are not our options, they're the options granted by law, a civil code article that gives those options.
I understand that with a certificate, obviously, that, that makes perfect sense, just, you know, building anything, housing all, but, but do we not have anything on there about, how did they start building before, like, from the given permission? I mean, you would think that would be something that the city administration or city, I mean, me and you being attorney, representatives, don't you think that would be pretty smart to do beforehand?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't answer why permission or approval was given to start, but it was informally, and it was done.
Yeah. And only thing that we disagree about is the occupancy permit is not a permit to occupy. It is a permit to say that it could be occupied because the building is complete. It's not that, oh, we get to go in, but if it is actually four ninety, civil code four ninety-three, four ninety-five, four ninety-six, we built it with consent. So right now, until they give us notice that says that y'all have decided that we should remove that seven hundred and fifty thousand, we should tear it down, then we do have the op, we should be able to occupy it, because it is ours by law, and I don't think we can disagree on whether or not it, the, the building itself, once built, is ours until y'all say remove it.
Well, Trey, to be fair, I don't want to put demands on you, I've asked for your client's position on this, once you give us the final position.
I did.
So they're not going to sign the lease?
Well, they can't sign the lease with the way you have it, you have it at twenty-one cents, you have, you have this liquidated damages clause, the liquidated damages clause, y'all can decide for convenience to, we're not going to do this lease, y'all, and then we have to walk away, and only thing y'all have to do is pay for our depreciated value, nothing else. That's not right. I don't care where you are. If you can't, if, if we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the grant assurance, and again, grant assurances, one of the things is, is that we have a language that they've put regular employees, that is not in the grant assurances language. We want to be able to use if Sky X, which is also on the field, who does my maintenance on my aircraft, wants to come in and do work at the hangar for one of the tenants, then they should be able to do that, even though they're not my regular employee. Grant assurances doesn't require that. They're insisting on that language being in there. They're also insisting on language being in there that says that if I have other people in my aircraft, in my hangar, which, that's the whole purpose of a hangar facility, is to have third parties to come in and store their aircraft there, they're wanting the option to be able to come in and actually up my rent, but won't tell me how much they're going to up my rent, but I also don't think they should up my rent. That's the whole point of having a hangar business. So that's kind of where we are, that's the lease that's been provided. It doesn't comport with what the grant assurances are, in my estimation, without, without getting into a what happened when, as far as the amount goes, I still think whenever y'all did it in two thousand and fifteen, and it was still set at twelve cents CPI, the twenty-one cents is above that. That's just facts.
So Mr. Charles, I ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If they did a final inspection, and this is turning out to be a regular thing, because it was done in District Three too, if they did a final inspection, what's stopping them from going into the building?
Well, currently, I think it's two things. It's the certificate of occupancy, which has not been issued, and it's the, the lack of a lease. So those two things are, are separate, related. I, I think the concern, and I'm speaking off the cuff here, because I've seen a lot of back and forth between our city council, I'm sorry, our city attorney and the owners and the representatives, there has been an effort made to, to come to an agreement. The city feels that it's twenty-one cents a square foot, FAA agrees it's twenty-one cents a square foot, FAA has reviewed the lease. I think there's a concern that if the certificate of occupancy is issued, that the owner may attempt to occupy the building without a lease, and that only further compounds the problem we're running into right now. There, there were mistakes made, I think we can acknowledge that, we're trying to resolve those mistakes, we're trying to work with the owners of, of the hangar, so that we can have them on the airfield. I don't think anyone wants.
No. Mr. Charles, this is what I'm asking you, and I know we ain't going to talk about this airport in an hour and a half tonight now, I mean, make that clear, but, Mr. Charles, this is what I'm asking. You know, they didn't do the contract, and here they done spent almost a million dollars, and the contract wasn't done then, so why are we holding them up now? That's, that's all I'm asking.
I, Councilman, I think it goes back to the fact that there's no lease. This is very atypical of how the city would do business, right? Typically, if you have a developer that wants to build on city property, there is an agreement in place before that, that happens. In this particular case, there was an agreement to delay the lease, I, I can't speak to the reasons for that until after utilities were provided at the location. That has happened, we have been working on trying to establish a lease since that time. The building is now completed, the building has passed final inspection, as you've indicated, all that's left on the inspection side, the permitting side, is the certificate of occupancy, but you can't occupy the building until there's a lease. So that's kind of where we are.
And I just think, you know, I, I just think that's pretty bad business, that you got somebody sitting there investing that much money, and then now you have a lease not in place, and so now, it's just, I don't know, it just seems like a ball, a huge ball was dropped.
I, I'm not going to point fingers at anyone, but, but I think the mayor has said before, this, this happened during a transition period at the airport, and clearly, certain checks and balances were not in place, as they should have been. I can tell you that going forward, this will not happen again. We will not permit construction on the airport property without a lease.
Yeah. Sir, I ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
Who told you to tear the building down?
The attorney. Well, this is, let me be fair, this is what the options were given. This was options. A, your client signed the leases presented, B, your client removes the hangar and restores the prior, the property to its prior condition, which was grass. The city can remove the hangar at your client's expense, or the city keeps the hangar and pays the city's option, the value of materials, workmanship, or the enhanced value. That's, that's it. Those are my options.
See, that's why we have an issue. Don't nobody spend no seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, make an investment like that, then all of a sudden, somebody just, you got two options. Sign the lease, which agreement should have been made before they start doing the building, then all of a sudden, and you know darn well that it's wrong to tell somebody, just tear the building down. Come on now, that, that language shouldn't even take place. And then in the process, if you don't tear it down, we'll tear it down at your cost.
Councilor, let me just be clear, that's the, that's the options the civil code, the Louisiana civil code gives these circumstances. These are not options somebody made up. That's a direct quote from the Louisiana civil code article. That's what happens when somebody builds improvements on someone else's property with their consent, but the owner says, okay, now we have a problem, we don't have a lease, so you have options. And those are the options the law gives them, and we're trying to sort through what, what the owner wants to do.
This, this is one of the other main reasons, multiple ones, that why we have this investigation on, on the table right now, in a scope out here, to, to hopefully, uh, work on figuring out and fixing it in the future, because it's unfortunately, it's not just you and your issues and, and your client's issues with the airport, it's, it's in almost every, every aspect of the, the city.
Councilman, if I may, just to, just to clarify something, so the certificate of occupancy, I'm sorry, the final inspection was Monday, is that correct? This past Monday, so yesterday?
No.
Yesterday or Friday? It was, it was recently?
A week ago.
A week ago.
An over a week. And we also have the email saying, we're not going to give that until.
So, so the, the final inspection, to be clear, this is not so much an issue with the Building Department, the permitting process, this is more of an issue with the airport and the lack of a lease, and the city in a situation where there is a concern that if we issue a certificate of occupancy, the owner will occupy the building, and then we have compounded the issue where we have no lease.
There is a problem there, Charles, because you shouldn't have had a permit, come in the permit off the Building Department on a building that does not have a lease in place to build on city property, so that should have, that is a problem.
The, the issue was that the, the building was allowed to be constructed incorrectly, and when, when other city departments learned of this, when the mayor learned of this, steps were taken to correct that, right? To get it properly permitted, to do the airspace survey, which had not been completed with FAA, to make sure that everything was correct, the lease being the last part of that, or not the last part of that, but a part of that, should have been the first part of it, was not.
We're not talking, we're not talk, hold up one, one sec, one sec, one second, one se, one second here. We're going to wrap this up, but let me make this comment, we're not talking about a shed.
No.
We're not talking about a shed, we're talking about a big building here. So what we're going to do, I'm, I'm hoping you guys could come to some type of meeting, I do see here, Councilwoman Gonzalez just showed me that the agenda is posted on the website, it does have a copy of the agenda attached to it, what is item number six?
Of new business.
Yeah, of new business, where they're going to be talking about these leases, so.
The lease is the rates.
The, the rates, I'm sorry. So I, I, I'm hoping we can get this, they can get this here wrapped up, but again, we're not talking about a, 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 a doghouse.
No.
We're talking about a big building here.
Well, and, and I just want to leave you with this, and how it's germane to what isn't just this, this isn't the first building that they've allowed to get to the point where they've allowed construction to occur, and, and not had the permit, and at the end, here's the lease, sign it. Now, I will say this, and I, I sent this to Mr. Coudrain, that we would sign a lease that had the twenty-one cents in. My issue with the twenty-one cents is not necessarily the twenty-one cents as itself. If it's legal, it's legal. That's not the problem. The problem is, is that if y'all want to walk away from this lease in year two, or year one, or whatever year you want to, we have to just allow you to do it, and y'all have to just give us a depreciated value, and we have to walk away. And there's nothing we can do about it, because it is liquidated damages, that is all the things that they have. The regular employee, that, that needs to come out of there. That's one of the other things, it's not in the grant assurances because of the very reason. We also don't want the ability for the city to come in and say, you've got four, five, six airplanes in here, we want to tax them too. How much? I don't know. We don't know, it's in the lease, it just says we can. That's vague language, that we can't go in and go into a fifty-year lease with something where y'all can always come in and say, you know that, that part of your lease that's where y'all can always come in and say, you know that, that part of your lease that said you were gonna do X, Y, and Z, well, we're gonna do that, how much? I don't know, 100, 200?
Andre, is this, is this how the lease has always been written all these years?
Yeah, Sam, it's the same, it's, it's similar leases that they've done, I mean, I just don't wanna belabor that.
Yeah.
We've been through this so many times, so many places, we have a disagreement, if we can't reach an agreement, there's a remedy under law, both for the owner and the city, and that's what we'll do.
Tear it down.
If that's your...
That's not what we wanna do, but that's what you're telling us.
No.
If we don't agree to this lease, then we have no other options.
You'll get, you'll get the materials that you spent, you'll get your money back, because you'll, because that's the deal, that's what the law allows, and that's what we're gonna do, what the law allows.
We wanna do business in Hammond, we wanna provide additional revenue to the city. We took raw land and developed it, and now all we're trying to do is recoup that money back. I mean, it's just not something that is that tough, and the only thing that we're really objecting to is the fact that they have decided on our lease, cause I also gave them the option as well, that we would sign an iden- identical lease that was in place prior to the March, or whenever they got the FAA ruling that said, y'all's leases are messed up, y'all can't do it like this, y'all need to change that. Well, we had already started construction, permits were done, everything, approvals were given, and now they said, now you're gonna change your lease, and our lease is gonna be something completely different than what has been done in the past. That's where our real issue comes in, and I asked them, I said, listen, just let us sign one of the ones that have already been done in the past, verbatim, and we'll sign it. But they said, no, we're gonna change it with y'all. I think they should change it with the next guy, obviously, that's before the construction has started, before nine, you know, almost 700 and something thousand dollars, and just material, that's not improvements, that's not the value, that's what they have actually physically spent on putting that out there, so this isn't the value of what's left after you've done it, this is what would cost us to do. So, I'll leave you with that, and I do hope, just like I spoke with Mr. Kudrow before, I do want to get through this, but we've gotten to the point now to where we either accept it as written, that was our option, or we go the other nuclear route, and I don't wanna do nuclear, we just want a lease that we can live with, that we know what it is. I think that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, resolution number eight, uh, anyone else?
Councilman, if I may, um, I'm sorry, do you have something on this?
You can come on, Ms. Cindy.
Cindy Grega, 1108 Ruchelay, guess why I'm here? I want to know if an interior inspection has been made of the duplex at 1100 Ruchelay to see if the owner has complied with the compromise and settlement agreement that the mayor signed with the owner. Do you know?
Yes.
It has.
There's not a duplex, yeah, there was an inspection.
It is a duplex.
Did, uh, did, I, I think last meeting, we wanted some type of documentation, and I don't have any, not, not, do you have any, or is there any...
It went out, the building inspector and others went out to look at it, the building inspector recommended that one of the doors on the interior, which is actually an exterior door, be replaced with an interior door, and the owners agreed to do that. It hasn't been done yet, when he's done, I spoke with the owner, when it's done, he'll call us, we'll get the building inspector back out, he'll issue his report, he'll include a video, and then, and then that'll be presented.
And that'll be made public to the residents of Villa West?
Yes.
And, and is, and who's inspecting it, is it Robert Morgan?
Yes, the building official, yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Charles?
Yes, I, so I, I was, what I wanted to comment is, I, I've been over in the building department, planning department, the Robert Street Building, as we call it, for about four and a half weeks now. Um, after we lost some staff, uh, the mayor moved myself and Lisa Lambert from administration over there, so we could kinda help right the ship, you know, keep things going. Um, I want this council and the public to know that what I have seen is good people really stepping up to the plate over there, working as a team, trying to correct errors that have been made in the past. Um, this investigation is, is not, in my opinion, going to help those people that we have in those positions currently. Um, were mistakes made in the past? Certainly, we just had a long conversation about a big one, but was that made by the building department? No, that was made by another department, these things happen. Um, the mayor and myself and others have been working to, to resolve these issues, we have new people in places, we have a new airport director, I'm not criticizing the old one, but we have a new airport director who's got a different way of doing things, um, who's going around getting, getting in his hands and eyes on everything at the airport, making sure he understands things, if he doesn't, he's coming and asking questions. We've got new staff over in the building and planning departments, we brought on Robert Morgan, who was here previously in a consulting capacity, we brought on a city planner, certified city planner in a consulting capacity, um, everyone over there now is, is doing really good work, and we're getting a lot of compliments, I'm hearing the compliments, they're coming in from the public. Um, I, I would, I would like to ask for additional time so that we can, we can continue what we've started there in terms of turning things around, and if the council or the public feels that things have not turned around, then we would welcome an investigation, but, but I feel like at this point, the investigation is just gonna dig up things that were done in the past, that were done by people who in many senses aren't, aren't there today, they're, they're not the same staff that were there, you know, four months ago, a year ago.
Thank you, Charles, for informing us of that.
One thing, I'm...
One moment.
12 Ravenwood, my name's, I'm sorry.
Give me one moment, thank you, Charles, for informing us of that, but it seems like we keep going around in a circle with some of the same issues and problems, I do understand that, and I appreciate that, but when do we get to a point where some of this stuff has to stop? Um, cause I'm still scratching my head behind the airport issue, you know, not being able to fly a plane or anything like that, when you're hearing this stuff that's being presented in front of you, and you're looking for people that's, that you put in places on these boards to give you credible information for you to make a good decision based off of, but you're getting conflicting information sometimes, and I understand a lot of this stuff just fell into your lap with the position that you, that you have taken, but, just like you get calls, we get calls too, and our representatives that we represent are looking for us to do something, so, but I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question, my name's Deborah Swenson, I live at 12 Ravenwood in Woodbridge in Hammond, Louisiana, 7401, um, I have a question regarding the gentleman that's supposed to do the repairs of the town, has he been given a deadline to do that?
Not a hard deadline, Deborah.
Can I ask why he hasn't been given a deadline? Because obviously, this could just go on forever.
It, it won't go on forever, but no, he, he's actually leaving to go out of town, and when he gets back...
Well, it's been going on all these weeks, I think what it's been at least two weeks, a month, a month since, I think it's been about a month since we were told that he was supposed to fix it already, so that's just my other thing about this particular situation. The other thing I have is, only after telling at another meeting that 210 Ravenwood was a problem, there was a permit on the door, nobody goes back with a tickler system to check on it, only after saying that at a meeting, and then a month later, I made a gentle call to the building department, the code enforcement, about, um, was anything being done about that, then they were on it, that they sent a certified letter to the gentleman to update the yard and fix the yard, and maybe they're working on the permit, I don't know. So, I feel, even though what Charles said, I appreciate the mayor investigating and looking, I still feel that this should still be investigation that should be had, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Charles, I heard you say that the building permit office wasn't responsible for what's going on at the airport, did you say that? You said somebody else made the error?
The, my understanding is that the airport board, the authority, um, permitted the construction of the hangar, they, they approved construction of the hangar. Um, what should have happened at that point is that the owner should've been directed to the building department to get a permit, um, they should've been informed about FAA airspace requirements, which is part of the construction process before you build anything, FAA wants to see a site plan, they wanna know where the building is located. Um, the project moved very quickly, and again, this was during a period of transition, um, mistakes were made, um, we are trying to correct those mistakes, we are trying to work with the owners of the, the hangar to, to allow them to come on the airport, and, and to, to be a good tenant, as I'm sure they will be. Um, i- in this process, as was referenced, we had the FAA compliance findings, which we are directed by FAA to, to, to resolve, and, and those largely centered on leases, and what had been done in the past, and inconsistencies in what had been done in the past, and so, we went back to our lease agreement and realized we had different iterations of lease agreements. Um, we worked with FAA to come up with a lease agreement that they felt was strong and, and met their requirements, um, they've encouraged us to adjust our fee structure at the airport, so that we can be, as I said at the last meeting, um, more cost defen- uh, uh, more cost effective, more, more self-sufficient going forward as an airport. Um, all of those things are happening, right? Um, we are working, I, like I said, I've been on those email threads, I've reviewed the leases myself, I've offered some suggestions myself through the city attorney, um, our, our airport director, the mayor has been on those emails, uh, I think we're all working, we're trying to work with the property owner, the building owner, the hangar owner to, to resolve this. Um, we're trying not to look too much into the past, we're trying to look forward to the future and, and to resolve this, but, but the issues were, was began at the airport, um, the building department stepped in when we realized we needed to get everything permitted properly so that it could proceed.
I want to add one bit, one I wanna correct say, cause it was approved by the board to construction on February 8th, according to this right here, I went back and looked while we were sitting here, and the building, or the airspace study was done on March 4th, the building permit was issued April 10th, we didn't begin construction till April 14th, after Dave LeBeau was given a copy of the permit, and it was July, uh, 10th that the mayor called and did a stop work permit, because he suddenly realized that the utilities that they agreed to in the airport board meeting, he did not have the funds for, and that was the quote unquote, you're moving faster than us, okay? We had a permit to do everything we did, okay, and, Mr. Andre, the lease did not change until I got up in front of this board and spoke against the council, because there was another lease issued in May, in March, that had the previous language, and mine was the first one changed after I spoke at this council. I'm done.
See, that's what I'm saying, I'm not making quick.
And also, the retaliation against holding my certificate of occupancy did not occur until I spoke at the last council, this is straight retaliation because I offended the crowd over there.
And that's, you know, you saying that, Charles, we talking about the building permit office, now you talking about airport authority, uh, board, so, look like both of them need to be investigated now, and so, that's what I like about coming up here, once people open their mouth, then you know where the problem at, and that's the whole idea, that, that this shit shouldn't even be taking place, you know, for what's going on with the airport, that the councilmen have to do this and say that, we need to bring it to an end and make it quick, because what's going on, honestly, if I had to spend $750,000 on anybody, and I mean this here, I'd be mad, and what we don't look at, and what we don't see, that right now, we have to be careful how we talk to people and what's going on, because you know what, people are hurting, and if somebody spent that kinda money, and that's where people get hurt at, you know, and I'm talking about, and I'm just gonna tell, tell you in my community, even with 50 cent, playing a dice game, it cau- it takes lives away. Uh, the, uh, the young lady from Steve District, see how she called the building permit office, and still couldn't get a clear answer, here she had to come up here, not even in her district, had to come up here and ask, what date it's supposed to take place on? You know, we vote on stuff, we say stuff, well, you know what we voting on, what date that they supposed to take the door down, what date they supposed to do this here? You can't even give a hard answer, and the lady from Villa West, you know, when it's supposed to take place, we shouldn't have to keep going through this here, you know, it's been about two months, and he, he was still dealing with a Villa West issue that should've ended a long time ago, and we just would've done things the right way.
And this, uh, uh, you know, I heard all you said, Charles, at the end of the day, this keeps happening all over the city, and it shouldn't have happened, so, all this used, we changed personnel, this and that, airport's talking about building a building on a, on property that they had a permit to build and no lease, this one over here in Villa West, I have records of emails staying, checking in with them, the building permit office with this slab being poured, making sure everything's been checked or not, any permits been issued or not, checking it, oh, no, no permit's been issued, they go out there, check out, nope, nothing, then they go and still try to build it, put the slab down there, email them again, they say, oh, okay, I said, you need to stop it, go ahead and check all zoning, all codes, permits, make sure everything is double-checked, eyes, everything, have email, they stopped it. Then the next week, they go and give a tour permit to them with a guy who has passed away two months ago, and he's on there, and they gave him a permit, didn't check anything, and it's all half-filled out, wrong, incorrectly. Now, we're dealing with this thing so many months later, when it should've never happened, because I notified, thankfully, the subdivision notified me of this, and I notified y'all, the administration, building department immediately, and then they went ahead and send a fraudulent permit, and we still have noticed, so, yeah, you can change this and that, we have a problem in this city, and it's a big problem, and it's a lot of liability, and it can cost us tax dollars from trying to litigate all this stuff, that it's gonna be a big issue, it needs to stop, and there's a lot of people that are still there that have been there, so, all this change of personnel and everything else, I mean, we have a problem and it needs to fix, and it continues to happen all over the city, and it's big things. Go ahead.
To my 60 seconds that I spoke a while ago, let me add about 30 seconds worth of, I appreciate the fact that, Charles, y'all are doing much better, but that doesn't give any reason to not go ahead and investigate, you don't, ju- just because someone's doing better, you don't stop and say, okay, well, you're doing better, so we're gonna kill the ins- the, uh, investigation. I'm in favor of doing the investigation, period, and see where it goes, and, uh, that's about 30 seconds. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify, I, I didn't suggest that we kill the investigation, I just asked for a little more time while we try to correct things.
You, you've had, you've had three months, Charles, plenty enough time, anyway, go ahead.
It's recorded, y'all can go back and listen to that, but Frankie Vittorio here, you know, one other thing, I just like, I keep listening to, um, the airport board, like, seems to be kinda getting, you know, whatever, blamed or whatever, unless something has changed, the charter, our charter, the city charter, doesn't actually really give the airport board any real authority, it's an advisory board. So, you know, and here, don't investigate, the, the, the board approved this, is the kinda cover here, which, the board doesn't have any authority to approve anything, it advises, so, so, I think the council, and I've said this to probably all of you, needs to get in control of what's going on here and get to the bottom of this, and I know three or so of you have really tried, I know there's others here, but hopefully, y'all all can come together and get on this, because what you've heard tonight is not, is not reasons not to investigate, it's reasons to investigate, so hopefully, y'all move forward with this and get on top of it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of points.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yeah, so, I'm glad, let's talk about the actual investigation, you know, we voted to do an investigation, and so what we're talking about tonight, and what's represented is a resolution with a lot of information, which we got yesterday, so I, this is about as much time as I've had to take notes, it is, uh, a lot that I wanna ask questions about, and I guess the point of all my questions is, we may need more time to make sure this is worded right, cause I think this is far too broad, and there's some things in here that are legally troubling to me on behalf of the city. So, um, let's just start, um, just so everybody understands what we're saying, is that, section two, it says the Hammond City Council declares that the scope of this investigation should also include investigation of third-party entities and/or persons directly or indirectly involved, et cetera. I don't know legally, do we have the right to investigate third parties who are not affiliated with the city, and, uh, as the mayor, the employ- And as the mayor, the employees, or departments of the city, I think that's legally problematic. Section 3, this is the bulk of it. The investigation shall provide a report to the city for consideration of any action needed to secure and improve the function of its government and for the specified purposes of determining compliance with the charter law, policy, procedures relating to. And there's a whole list of different building permit items, I think these are all relevant, these are all important things. Access and use of electric signatures, decisions regarding enforcement, non-enforcement, we all know we've had issues with that, issuance of building permits, we've talked about that quite a bit. One question I have is it says, for the period beginning August 27th, 2021, and ending November 27th, 2024. So, I'm just curious, and this is a question, I have many other points, but this is a question of what are these dates, why are they significant? Just so I understand why they're in there.
I went back three years, you could go back four, five, or 10 if you'd like, but we went, well, just, we went back three years from whenever the, pretty much, incident happened with the permit coming across with a signature of somebody who is unfortunately no longer with us.
So, that Villa West permit was August 27th, 2024?
That's when it kinda stirred up. I went back three years.
Okay.
Was 2021 or 2024?
Well, he's saying he went back. The triggering thing was the Villa West issue, that he said he just chose three years to go back. And then, ending November 27th, I guess that's when you anticipate having the report back?
It went back three years.
No, this is going forward. November 27th, 2024, why is that date chosen? Is that when you want to have the report back from whomever this is?
It's a scope of work, starting that, I started drafting up that, has been sitting around for a while and nothing's been done, and everybody had the opportunity on this council to suggest anything that they'd like in this scope that we voted for several weeks ago, and actually had more time because of the hurricane and other issues. And so, therefore, this was taking initiative to start on a scope of work to be presented to, hopefully, a third-party investigator, or attorney, or a combination of a few, but we had to get a scope of work put together that may change or modify several times at some point, whenever the professionals in that industry look at the scope from us at some point and say, well, and then give us some pointers, because I'm not actually an expert in, I'm not a, you know, a investigator, but I'm able to get a scope of work put together to, hopefully, cover all of the issues that may or may not be there. And, yeah, that's kinda where we went with this, yes.
Right, but my question was, you have it ending November 27th, 2024, which hasn't happened, so I'm just asking why that's there. And if that's just a placeholder, then that's fine.
Yeah, it's a placeholder, we can modify.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know if there was a reason for it, and I wanted clarification. So, that would be any things in the future that goes wrong, we also want to investigate, but only to that date. The subsection 2, receipt and expenditure of public funds, that's fine, I don't have an issue with that. The third one, instances of retaliation or discrimination against personnel in hiring, firing, promotion, demotion, or transfer by the direction of the mayor or building department personnel. Obviously, that's horrible, I hope that doesn't happen. Those are all personal rights of the person, and I'm not sure why we need to be investigating someone's claim for discrimination, or wrongful firing, or wrongful termination. Those things are, they have many rights, employees have plenty of rights, and what does the council need to do that for? People are talking to us about permits and things not being enforced, and I think that that is outside the scope of what I thought we were doing this for. Section 4, that the city council will solicit the services of an independent investigator, who could be an attorney, accountant, urban planner, any similar qualified person. Any non-attorney shall have a specific experience conducted to investigate activities. They'll be disqualified for conflict of interest. I don't have a problem with that language, I'm curious as to what is the budget, and where is the funding for that to come from? If that's something that we've talked about? And then, if this is an attorney, or accountant, or urban planner, anyone who's a professional, is this gonna be an RFP? What is the scoring for the RFP? Or is this gonna be a bid, where we just take the lowest bidder? So, a scope of work, I think, should contain some of those issues? Do you, you want me to keep going, or you want to comment?
Oh, no, you can.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Section 5, I have a problem with. Until an independent investigator is selected by a majority of the council, investigator shall be the council president and councilman Vittorio. In the preceding section, it said you have to have a specific experience conducting investigations, which unless I know otherwise, President Andrews does not, and Sam, you just said you don't, so I think that is conflicting. The contempt issue in Section 6, I think, is problematic. I didn't have a lot of time, but I just looked at the charter, and the charter, any punishment under an investigation has to be by ordinance, this is a resolution, so that isn't, that doesn't really apply, this is, I think it's in conflict. And Section 8, all resolutions or parts in conflict herewith are suspended to the extent of the same for the period of this investigation. What is anticipated by this? Is this just holdover language from previous type documents, or is there something that I'm missing? Because it's a little too vague for my understanding. So, it's a lot, but I think it raises a lot of points. As we've seen in the previous years, I raise a lot of good points that don't get discussed or even commented on. So, I'm putting them out there, it's all recorded, we can talk about it or not talk about it.
Stanley Campbell, 8 Fairway View Court, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. I agree with a lot of the points that you just, that you just kinda went over. One that I disagree with about the retaliation of city employees to citizens themselves, and the situation at the airport, basically, we gotta look at this as the city being a business in itself. So, basically, in a retaliatory situation, you put the city at risk of a lawsuit, and I think that's something that should be a part of this investigation.
But that's part of my point, is we would go digging for the evidence of a retaliation, which someone themselves may not have pursued, and then put it in a report for someone to use, therefore, to get the city liable for that. How does that serve people who are trying to make the building department better?
Well, the way that I look at it is, as I said before, if you look at the city as a business, if I'm looking at it, I run a small real estate investment firm. And attending these meetings, basically what I've seen over the past couple of months is the city has a process problem. It seems that we have a process problem that needs to be dealt with. So, basically, a retaliatory problem, that's a part of that process. So, all the things at the airport, plus the other things in Villa West and all the other issues, that's a part of a process that's broken, and it's probably been broken for a very long time. So, it requires us to dig a little bit deeper. Right now, you guys, what y'all are doing right now is, we're just responding to it. We're not actually, we're not ahead of it, and it's just happening. You guys are sitting here, and you guys are spending two hours on this, these things to you that you have no control over at the point, at this point, you know, until they go to the meetings. But if there was a process in place, basically, you know, I think it would be a better situation. But I had two more questions, I'm not gonna go over my time. I know this is hypothetical, and this is kinda, this is kinda for the city attorney. In a hypothetical situation, as a citizen, I'm trying to understand exactly how the ordinance violation process actually works. If citizen X, let's say Stanley Campbell, if I broke, if I violated an ordinance, can I expect to get the same concessions that this guy in Villa West got?
Well, I think, certainly if yours is the exact same as Villa West, and we would expect to treat you the same way as we treat the guy at Villa West.
Well, see, and I hate to actually compare us to other parishes and other cities, I do a lot of business in the New Orleans area, and I deal with their code enforcement a whole lot. The parish attorney holds weekly hearings. Basically, on those ordinance that are broken, basically, they meet with the public, and they talk about those ordinance, and they pay their fines. They come in, hey, listen, you've got this amount of time to correct the ordinance violation, and you need to pay this fine downstairs in, you know, room 102. Why don't we have a process in place like that? That's what I'm speaking of, we have a process issue.
Agreed. So, we're looking to implement a, like a traffic day you have in court. You have a code enforcement day in city court. So, yes, sir, we're in contact with the, met with the folks in code enforcement, and the city prosecutor who handles code enforcement, and city court personnel. So, basically, you would get a ticket if you had a code enforcement matter, and you go to court. Yes, sir, that is, that is something that's...
But, once again, about two years ago, two years ago, we voted on this, or longer, on what Andre's discussing. And it went nowhere, it was in administration's hand for about two years. And then we had a meeting, well, one of the code enforcement guys was talking about, it'd be nice to have some type of authoritative ticketing systems where we can kinda clean this up. I said, well, Mr. Code Enforcement Guy, we actually have that. And he said, I know nothing about it. I said, well, we voted on it a while back, I'm not too sure where is it at right now, but I mean, we vote on it as a council, and we turn it over to the administration. And then, so the administration puts it in place. Well, it hadn't gone anywhere. Thankfully, now, we had a big meeting, and they're supposed to be working on this issue with the ticketing system and a court date, but the problem is, it's sad that it's been over two years now, and we've already voted on it, and nothing has been done. And so, I appreciate Andre from looking at it and taking and going, but I mean, that should have been, we should already be, we've already, should be working out the kinks of the process two, so many years ago. So, I mean, but that's all over the city, what we're having, and that's why this investigation is important, and it should be detailed, and it needs to be a scope of work that has a lot of detail to it. And you can have 10 people in this room, and they're gonna nitpick anything to death and try to argue. You know, you either for it, you against it, if you wanna make some modifications, or whatever, whatnot, but you gotta start somewhere, and this was a draft that was proposed, and this was voted on several, probably a couple of months ago now, or several weeks ago. And anybody on this council could have presented, emailed, or sent anything about any, any scope of work, not one, I received. I went ahead, and that's not offense of anybody else, but I went ahead and I sent this in last Thursday.
I didn't get it.
Not sure whenever she got whatnot, but I sent it in last Thursday, and it was sent in, and so it's, it had to be in by Thursday or whatnot, so it was sent in, in the parameters, and that was where it was. So, that was a story on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, I appreciate you saying the things that you said, and that's what it take, and that's what I love about Mr. Sal, and I let it be known, Mr. Sal asks questions. And every time Mr. Sal asks questions, he always get a lot of static. And I appreciate you, Mr. Campbell, and I want you to keep coming, and keep seeing what's going on, because just like you said, the process in New Orleans, you know, and it's amazing how other parish can do things, but we can't do it. Then retaliation, and see, that's what I, that's what I deal with a whole lot. And see, Mr. Campbell, by you saying that, yeah, you can go talk to the mayor, and I guarantee your problem will be solved. But look how the people from the airport can't go talk to the mayor. Now, all of a sudden, you know, tear the building down. And so, I appreciate you saying that, and these are things that need to be said, yeah, I can go talk to the mayor, hoping he in a good mood now, but these are things that we go through all the time. So, and I'm gonna say this, hold up, Mr. Frank, I'm gonna say this here, the guy that was working in the building permit office, what's his name was?
Which one?
The one got fired.
Uh, that's a city planner?
The city planner.
He wasn't in the building, he actually wasn't in the building department, he was the planning department.
Okay, in the planning department.
Same building, but different.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, he worked in that building. And what I'm saying is, he come to the meeting and said it need to be an investigation. So, how much proof you need? When this man moved down here, and the problem was, you know, if you don't do it the way I say do it, well, we don't need you. We can't keep having that. What Mr. Charles said, I appreciate. Yeah, it look good now, but guess what? Next month, month from next, how it gonna look? Because guess what? You still working in the same pot, and if you don't do it the way the mayor say do it, you get fired. So, yeah, we need to clean up something, you know? Next thing you know, I wanna know, why we gonna do an investigation on our finance? Because guess what I heard? The street said, Ms. Lacy stole some money. Yeah, that's right. So, you see? See how these little things come out? And she not around no more? So, investigation need to take place, and we can't keep putting it off. That's it.
So, the gentleman that spoke prior to me kinda, kinda hit on some of the points I was gonna touch on, and I don't know if you've got legal training or what, but I've, you know, I've never heard a lawyer, you know, give the advice of, well, just take your chances, do whatever you're doing, and hope you don't get sued.
Are you implying that I said that?
I'm about to ask you a question, actually, Ms. Gonzalez. So, I don't know if you're prepared to offer a legal opinion to the city that all their policies and human resource practices are in perfect compliance with the law?
No, I don't practice employment law, so absolutely not.
So, then, I don't know, I don't know how, part of y'all's job is, is the policies, enacting the policies of the city, hiring practices, y'all, the policy manuals have to be improved, making sure they're enforcement, that's part of your job. So, if you're not, don't feel like you're prepared to offer that kind of opinion today, I don't know how you can say that, that those policies shouldn't be looked at, reviewed, investigated, and determined, because most businesses, particularly businesses that the business owner themselves have to come out of pocket potentially to pay lawsuits, like the taxpayers do, for the city, wanna know that the policy, that the entity has policies in place, and that they're being complied with. Because be proactive about it, not to just wait until they get sued. Because what happens when you wait to get sued, is it costs somebody a lot of money. Whereas, so, I don't know, I don't know...
I didn't say that I didn't want it to be investigated, or that we shouldn't look at those things. I'm just trying to edit this resolution that you wrote so that it's actually correct. And I think that it, it takes out some things that are problematic.
On the record, he did not write that, so...
I'm sorry, that was my assumption.
You're making accusations, Ms. Attorney, and making accusations.
There's all kinds of accusations in this meeting.
But, well, again, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how anybody, whether you're a lawyer or not, could believe that a prudent course of action is just hope the policies in place are proper, and hope they're being followed unless we get sued.
Not what I said, not what I said.
I try, I try my best not to really get back and forth, but it's so hard up here, because every time you come up here and try to do something right for the people, I have to deal with Councilman Gonzalez and Councilman Leon, every time, and it's for the people of this community. And it does not matter what is presented to this, to this council, I could put money on it, they gonna have something to say, no matter if I say the sky's blue, they gonna say it's red, and either or. So, it doesn't really matter, that's your opinion of it, you, you know, probably wouldn't really care if an investigation's going or not, but at the end of the day, it's important, and this is a scope of work, and you've had six weeks to present a scope of work if you felt that you could do any better than anybody else, and I ain't gotten nothing from you, so...
I'm gonna interject on that. When we spoke about this, when we spoke about the investigation and voted on that, we, we collectively said that we would get together and talk about it, and come up with a scope of work. I never got an email from you, Sam, I never got a phone call from you, I never got a phone call from anybody saying, hey, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? What do you think? That's what I thought was gonna happen. That's what we collectively agreed upon. Not to come in here tonight, and this, I didn't get this in the email until, I don't know, I think it was like a day or two ago. So, you know, and that's good. If you're looking at this, if you're looking at this document as a working document, great, love it. But there are some, there are some things that we need to work on, and it is a good start, but I don't think it's the final product.
Christine Monastery, 208 Camilla Avenue. So, off of what you said, which is a little off the topic of what I want to talk about, were any of y'all proactive in contacting Vittorio in six weeks to come up with something better? But that's, that's a question, I don't need an answer, it's obviously no. So, anyway, we're talking about some investigations, which is very interesting to me, because several years ago, we investigated our chief. And I'm not gonna call it the booking room incident, because a man was actually attached to some handcuffs. His name is Kendrick Ratliff, and he got beat by our chief of police. And we spent, I'm gonna say hundreds of thousands of dollars to do an investigation, and I have patiently awaited to see the city implement what was given to you to implement. And so, has that been done? I've come up here and asked several times, I've even emailed the city and asked for you to let me speak on that. I've encouraged you to give us updates on it, and nothing, and nothing. And since then, a man's been shot in the face.
Well, I think after that, I think, I think the council made a, made a motion, but it was just a, it was just a recommendation for that chief. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, back to the arguing between each other and all. We all know that we've had a lot of issues, okay? So, the resolution is gonna help bring somebody from the outside in, and this is what we need. And this is what we need. Because every time we get up here, you know, I, I complain or whatever, but it's not gonna do any good. Because it's always, that just put aside again. So what I'm thinking, we bring somebody in who doesn't have any ties, and we had a good man here a while back, but for some reason, the mayor got rid of him, which I couldn't understand because this guy was well-educated in his field. But you know, the mayor's cost us a lot of money, the city. It's cost us in the last few years, over four million dollars. A lot of taxpayer money. And I know I liked the mayor at the first beginning, but as time went on, things kinda changed. But I'm endorsing this, and what Sam did, nobody called Sam either. He took the initiative to go and take his time from his work. How many people take time from their work to take care of what's going on here and all get, what are you getting? How much money you making? Could you, could you feed your family on what you make here? No. So, everybody can blame all they want. All I'm interested in is one thing. Get this passed, get somebody from the outside where you don't have no favors at all, okay? So thank you, Sam, for taking the time to do what you done. Thank y'all.
I got, I got a little bit more. So, go ahead.
Good evening, council. President Andrews, um, thank you, Councilman Divitorio, um, for putting this resolution together. I speak in the capacity of my former job as a federal investigator. I wish I could do this investigation for you, but because of conflict of interest, I can't. But the time span that you chose, 2021 to 2024, is perfect. You all have a systemic problem in the administration. And it's no angst against anyone. I appreciate what Charles said about having new people in place, but you have to go retrospect in order to make policies and best practices to move forward. There, when you get ready to do your request for a proposal or your bid, that will be a perfect opportunity for Councilwoman Gonzalez to have input if she so choose. But you, like Mr. Sal said, took the initiative to put this together, writing it yourself. So be very clear, because sometimes people say things to minimize the things that you do, each of you. And you all have differences. You all come from different backgrounds, but the whole point tonight is for our money to be accounted for, for policies and procedures to put, be put in place for accountability. How do you expect our city to be one of the best cities as we want it to be if we don't have the simple things in place? This airport, this is a conundrum. That's like you telling me you're gonna increase my water rate for my water bill without being approved by you all first. That's what that is. And if we can find a better way to move forward, then do that. And so I expect my councilperson to vote in favor of this, and then you put out a bid and then you have input from there. I don't know where the disconnect was that she didn't get it, but now we're here. So hopefully you all will make the right choice. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a couple of points. One, no matter where we, where we go with this, it's gonna be a draw it out process. There's no, there's no doubt about that because if you're looking at trying to investigate three years, that doesn't happen overnight. What I, what I would like to see is, I'd like to see the Villa West situation resolved, like immediately. We don't want that to get, I don't want that to get caught up in this investigation and y'all still sitting here six months from that. I, I, I think everything has been done, I'm not sure, but I think that the, whoever, whoever in Villa West wants to be the, the spokesperson or, or it can go to, or it can go to Councilman Divitorio. But there needs to be a statement, I believe, from the city, saying, "This is what happened, this is what went wrong, this is what was corrected." The end. Boom. We don't need to wait six months for that. Let's get Villa West removed from this, from this equation. Now, y'all may disagree with that, but I'm just saying, I think you gonna get caught up in this and, 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 you know, you may never get the answers you really want. I don't know if that's something that's, that's possible, we can do.
Two, two sep- two separate, two separate deals, the thing with Villa West is getting done as we speak, from my understanding from Andre, uh, the scope of investigation, that's gonna go on and that, that is not gonna get tied in with an investigation that's gonna be taking care of a lot of things, a, a, you know, investigating a lot of issues throughout the building department office. This is one of them that's gonna be accompanied with it, but that's not gonna get tied up in six months of doing that because supposedly if everything's true, they've already started doing what they're doing. And I told Andre and administration last meeting that I wanted documentation showing it, and so he says it's gonna be wrapped up soon. There's no date on it, which I definitely do want them to have a, a date of expiration of when they need to get it done by, and then the documentation sent over because they've had several weeks. Actually, they've had before when they got issued a permit fraudulently, they had since August 27th and they shouldn't have put it down in the first place. And then here we are, October 8th. So I mean, that's, to me, that's very, that's a lot of time to get it done. And so documentation hopefully should be at our next meeting. Investigation, it might go on for a while. Unfortunately, it probably is because it seems like every day I hear more and more issues throughout different department, different parts of the city, uh, with, with the building department office. So I mean, yeah, there's probably a lot of issues. And it's gonna continue going on until we have some type of investigation started and done and actually figure out where the problems are and what needs to happen.
It is indirectly related to the permit investigation because it was the fraudulent permit that was issued that kinda jump-started the whole thing. And, and I neglected to say earlier regarding the fact that it is or it is not a duplex. I met with one of the previous owners of the property. She was a customer of mine, Belinda Vining Trepanier. We did a lot of business together. And I showed her the floor plan and she drew the walls and the doors in. And where there is a full kitchen was her master bedroom. So to say that it's not a duplex and doors walled off is incorrect. So, and, and there does need to be a time limit on it, but there isn't. Because the compromise and the, the agreement that the mayor signed, there's no accountability. There's no date, there's nothing. And reiterating, the owner does not admit to any violation. So I guess he doesn't get fined for violating the ordinance, is that correct?
No, there's no fine, that would be the issue. Again, in the, in the code enforcement, our, our effort is for compliance, not punishment.
Right.
So we, we focus on compliance. We focus on compliance and not punishment, and that's the theory of code enforcement. And look, at the end, there'll be a video. And everybody look at the video and they'll look at Robert Morgan's report and then everybody else will reach their conclusions, however, however you conclude, but there will be that.
And in the meanwhile, our tax dollars paid to remove the slab.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, but we removed the slab.
But because of a fraudulent permit, I could just-
But the problem is, no accountability, you said.
Right.
Accountability is the key word we're missing in this city of Hammond. All across the boards, accountability.
Yeah.
Thank you. One other point, um, for the last thirty minutes or even longer, policy and procedure, policy and procedure kept coming up over and over and over. That was talked about way more than investigation. Now, we, we getting ready to spend a ton of money on an investigation over a three-year period. It is my opinion, and I know that there's, we all know that there's probably been some wrongdoing or some human error, whatever. I'd rather see us spend the money on a consultant firm coming in and developing policies and procedures and keep us moving forward. The people, all the people in that whole department are gone. You got new people. Why we wanna drag them through history instead of moving them forward and giving them some support so that we can develop policies and procedures for the department? And at the end of the day, have a policy and procedure manual, which is something we can hold on to, as opposed to a report that lists all the things that went wrong over the last three years. That is, that is my opinion. I always believe in moving, in moving forward.
Accountability.
I understand what you say about where we been. I know it's important to know where we been, but at this juncture, it's also, I think, more important to move forward instead of bogging down the department and trying to figure out where they went wrong. Hey, sometimes you just gotta scrap it and start over.
It, it is important to look at history, because if you don't look at history, you'll make the same mistakes going forward.
Right. Steve, Dave.
I'm Zena Renee Washington, uh, 402 Washington Avenue. I go along with the gentleman, I understand that it's gonna be a lot of money, but y'all spend a whole lot of money on a whole lot of stuff up here that I don't agree with, so it don't matter about the money. Now, the time, that's a little different, but the money, I done come through these council meetings and I see a whole lot of stuff y'all do, because I got something over there I need y'all to give me some grants for. But anyway, but I know I can't give them, uh, because I'm not the right person. But however, the, like he said, the investigation needs to be done because some people need to be held accountable. And not only do they need to be held accountable, like he said, it's gonna repeat itself. And how can you put new policies in, uh, place when you don't know how they messed up before? Because you might put the same policies back in place again and we're gonna be right back here at the same spot.
And I love hearing how much mon- I love hearing how much money we're spending on it, but how much money we may save in a future of wrongdoing that hopefully it prevents from having issues that could cost us even more money. Like this could be a fraction of the money we could lose if something is done like it's been doing. I mean, I, I, I can't believe we even sit here going back and forth on it. Sometimes, uh, Steve, I think you work for the city and not the people in the district, in the city and community, because you sound like Charles over there for a second. They all sounded just alike. And I understand his, I understand his, uh, perspective of it, because he works for the city and, and he's, you know, trying to do what's right he thinks his job is for. But we have a problem and it's clear as day, we have a problem. And it's continuing every day. And then I gotta sit here through this meeting several hours every night because we, it's a mess behind scenes, this administration that you keep saying time and time over again, "Oh, we don't need to micromanage, let them do it, let them do it, they're doing it right, let them do it." That's not our job. Well, it is our job when it's not being done right. And then we have to step in. Yeah, I don't want to step in, I want it to be done right. But it has to stop and it has to get better and it has to, just like the airport stuff. We spent all that meeting, that shouldn't even been here. They should've had a conducted, a meeting in that board the proper way and done the proper way. And they could've had all those discussions and hashed it out and then came to us at some point in time. But we had to do it in our meeting because there's no accountability behind scenes and then they have to come to us because they're not getting anything done behind and, and, you know, things are not being handled correctly. So, yeah, I would love for it to be that way, but we have a problem and we need to move forward and get it done.
Would you be, would you be receptive to, as part of the investigation, developing policies and procedures as part of, you know, we, we just, they just talked about, you have to look at the history. Okay, so we look at the history and we take that to develop new policies and procedures?
Yeah, yes, and I think that's gonna be probably part of the work of, of, of the, of the investigator and then attorney and then the accountant and everything else, it's gonna be part of that because they gonna have a lot of problems, we gonna need that, that needs to be added to it. But I would imagine, yes, because I do not want to repeat this and I want to get it fixed. And if there's some problems that are fraudulent, that's criminal, that are whatever may be going on, they need to be held accountable for it. We need to move forward and we need to correct it and go on. It's nothing personal about anything, but we have a problem and it continues to happen in every department every day.
Jan Laboue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. One question. Am I understanding you correctly, there's no policies and procedures at all?
No, they have them. The question is whether they follow them and what they look like and are they updated? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, I've heard several times, there's none. So-
I, I, I'm pretty sure there probably are some, ma'am, but the problem is they're not following them and nobody being trained properly to know what's going on and doing it. And then, then it becomes a liability to you, me, all these taxpayers.
Oh, I understand. But an investigation will look at those policy and procedures and recommend the changes.
Yes, ma'am.
So it can all be done in one bundle.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is the last thing I'm gonna say. And it's so funny that we talking about an investigation and I keep hearing the word money. It gonna cost money, it gonna cost money. But guess what? We don't even know where the city staying with money right now because we never got a financial report.
And, and that's, and that's another thing you brought up, Council Wells, that was something, another thing, just like the building, um, the fines and everything, the code enforcement, that was two something years ago. I proposed about two something, about over two years ago and the council voted on it, getting the financial quarterly reports. Because of the resolution, the, the city administration decided that they didn't have to present it to us because it wouldn't have ordered it, so it can't be enforced, which I didn't, you know, realize that at that time. And so therefore, they didn't do anything for two and a half years, did not present us any quarterly, any quarterly financials at all. Then Andre, the city attorney, said, "Well, it needs to be ordered." I said, "Okay, sounds good, we go ahead and change it." And then now here we are, we still, now we tableing it and that's fine. Kip brought up the ordinance, "Do I need more time, you know, talk?" But at the end of the day, it should've been done. They had two and a half years to figure out how to use the computer system that we pay for to present the quarterly financial, the details again. It's 2024. Those systems can do anything and everything. Now, you may not have somebody, or you may need to get some more help to figure out how to work it and use it and present it, but it does everything that was in that, that exam that I, that proposal I did two and a half years ago and having seen one report from the administration because they did not want to do it and they felt like they didn't have to obey the council because it was a resolution, so they didn't do any of it.
Well, Jim Grega, 1108 Bruce Chalé, Hammond. I've run businesses, I've been with nonprofits. We've always had at least a quarterly report as far as our finances are concerned because it's how you do business. Now, if I'm not mistaken, we agreed that we would have reports at our council meetings. When will they be coming? I mean, we need more help? How can we be a city with all this knowledge and we can't come up with a simple P and L? We can't come up with a balance of what's in our bank? We can't come up with what's going on with our $350,000 street sweeper? But we can walk, run down the streets with potholes in them? It's time that we start making the city accountable for every dime that we spent. It's time. I mean, you go down to a sock company, selling socks, I promise you, they're gonna have a P and L. And if they want money, the banks gonna wanna see that P and L.
Yes.
So enough's enough. Let's put a date on it, give us something. Give, you know, we spend this on the street, we spend this on vehicles, we spend this, it's not hard. It's there, the numbers are there, the people don't wanna do it. And it's time it gets done. And that, my wife says, is not gonna go away.
No.
So, thank you.
Okay. I, I would propose, if y'all, it feels, I feel like you want to pass this tonight. I have four recommendations to how to change this tonight. I don't know if y'all wanna take them one at a time and vote on them as amendments. Let me just tell you what they are and we can have discussion if you want. I think we need to remove section two of this proposal, which allows us to investigate third parties. We do not have the right to do that under the charter. I think we need to, under 3.3, remove that regarding retaliation, discrimination of hiring, firing, and instead replace it with make recommendations to changes to policies and procedures and implement, and, and make recommendations for implementation strategies so we can actually substantively, substantively do something to move forward. I think for section four, we should include that, um, right after independent investigator by RFP requests for proposals, so we know how and how we're soliciting these listed services. And then the last one, section five, I would suggest you remove that where the investigator, until someone is hired, is Sam and Kip. I don't think that's appropriate, given that it says they have to have experience in investigative activities. activities.
That, that was pretty much, until it's done, anything that comes in or whatnot, that, that comes in regarding this investigation, there would have to be some type of, uh, point of contact until, until everybody's engaged, and therefore, you know, all five of us can't meet at one time, more than two couldn't, so we, I picked two, being the president, and then, since I proposed, they, they, or it's not saying that it had to be me, but I said I proposed and know more about it, that started out, that was why I was on there, until it gets in gear, an investigation, and then, you know, the clerk is actually mentioning it as well, too, with weekly reports, so that's kinda where that was. And, uh, this is a scope, and therefore, it's put out there, and whoever is hired is gonna probably give us another detailed, uh, recommendation at that time, that, that does something that can be, that has to be approved by us anyway, so they'll have different changes they may have, and you can look at it 20 different ways. So I don't really think anything really needs to be changed in there, the way it reads right now. So, I mean, that's just my opinion, I appreciate your opinion, but I think it's done well, just how it's written, and therefore, if it's a scope of work, and therefore, whoever bids on this job, once we get money allocated, whoever bids on the job, once we get some actual bids and budgets of what it's gonna cost from somebody who's professional, after they see the scope of work, then you can trim down, you can add to it, you can modify it whichever way. They may come back down with a million dollars, okay? Well, we're not probably gonna spend that, so therefore, we may have to get with them, and they'll say, "Well, this is kinda what I recommend, this and that," and it may be another scope. This is a scope of work that's being presented to move forward, to move, to move some people forward of getting some things to us, and then we gonna probably chop it up and move it around at that point in time, but that's, that's how I feel, and that's, that's what it is, and that's my opinion on it.
I really think that those are some minor changes. I, I think if we could, I think if we could come together and just make those few minor, those few minor changes, uh, it would bring us all together.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as it's written.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
No.
For the record, once again, made very valid points that we just don't even deal with. That's fine.
That motion required four votes under the ordinance to pass, because it takes two-thirds vote for the investigation. Well, it was, it was three in favor and two opposed. He did, it was three, but it takes, under the, under the charter, it takes, it takes two-thirds, which would be four votes for the investigation. The scope of the investigation, you open an investigation, you just didn't determine the scope.
Well, this was a resolution.
It's the scope.
This was a resolution.
It's still a resolution that requires a two-thirds vote.
It's a scope, though, it's a scope, and then it goes, and then, then it'll go move forward to the investigation when it's actually engaged.
So, so the charter requires that you have a specific purpose, right, in the investigation, and that's what you're talking about tonight. What's the, what's the purpose of the investigation? What's the scope of work?
You see, now, now, real quick, y'all, there's, y'all in this room, you see, this is why Councilman Wells has brought up several times in the past, that the council needs an attorney, because at the end of the day, uh, Andre represents the administration, because when things are done wrong, things are done wrong, he is gonna defend the administration, and that's what goes on. That's why I couldn't go to Andre on this scope of work, because at the end of the day, how can the sitting attorney that represents the administration, everything else, give me any kinda advice on writing a scope of work that he's gonna have to end up maybe possibly defending? How's that ethically correct, and how's the system even made like that? At the end of the day, you can't have an attorney represent some of the same people, it's just, it does not work right now, and I love how he chimes up real quick when it's something to do with the administration, but boy, he's quiet as a mouse whenever it's something, uh, that has to do with us. And I will sit in Andre, and it, and it's like that every time.
Ma'am, I helped you on things.
You, you have, but how you gonna, but explain to me, how are you gonna write a scope and help me on something that you're investigating, that you, that, that may, may inhibit litigation or whatnot?
What, what I would've suggested would probably have been like auditors, because what you really do is auditing, right? I would've suggested a random audit of per, of building files, of building permits that have been issued for three years, and your investigator comes in, he does a random audit of building permits that have been issued, and figured out, okay, what happened, was it done, was it done correctly, did it follow the policies and what happened? That, that would be my recommendation, when you get to a scope of work, very specific, so you have something to chew on, something that you can work with. This, as proposed, is, is really pretty hard, so that would've been my recommendation, Sam, had you come to me with something very specific.
Can I, can I ask a brief question real quick? Hey, first, before I say what I'm gonna say, I, I, I just wanna say to all the council members that I thank you guys for everything that you do. I know this, this, these meetings, they take you away from your families, uh, you guys donate your time to actually do the city's business when you guys come in here. Um, some of the recommendations, uh, Councilman Gonzalez, I feel like it takes the teeth actually out of the investigation itself to actually do what it's actually being brought to the floor for. Secondly, I kinda wanna ask, um, when the council comes here, basically, when you guys actually meet at these meetings, your opinions and, uh, basically the things that you guys are coming up with, um, do you consider it to be your own opinion, or is it that of your constituents that you represent that are in the room and both at home in their beds while you're here? I'll leave you with that.
Do you want an answer?
For all the fathers.
Yeah, I mean, I, I absolutely, I, I, I feel like I am representing my constituents and what they want. I think I only have one constituent who's actually here, um, but I talk to people about things, not this issue, this was not one that I've gotten any input on. I do sometimes bring my legal experience and knowledge, I think we all have our gifts we bring in, but certainly I'm representing the people who elected me, and I have, feel like I have a good, um, pulse on what they feel.
Okay, because I, I, I know like the consistence of most people that I talk to about some of the issues that were on the agenda tonight, um, not just in my area where I am, and just of any, any specific district, most people that I talk to about these agendas and the things that are on these agendas, um, they kinda, they kinda think that these issues need to be dealt with, and they're basically transparency inside this administration currently right now, it needs to be dealt with, and there, there needs to be investigation from people I talk to.
And I agree, I mean, I didn't say no, I just said what I had problems with, because I think there are legal issues here, so...
Yeah, but your recommendation takes the teeth off of the investigation.
I don't agree, I, I don't, I don't agree, I think there's a lot there. We can talk about it more.
He basically took some of the words out of my mouth. I do appreciate all five of y'all, you, uh, city councilmen, your dedication to what you do. I wind up talking to Sam a week and a half ago at eight o'clock at night, because he's been busy with his regular job. Kip, I know you're busy, I know Carly, you're, you're busy doing your regular job. Uh, Stephen, I don't know exactly what your normal job is, if you even have a job, but we, we appreciate, we appreciate you too, and, uh, you know, Andre, we appreciate you, but we see that your loyalty is to the city first. And you can't, you can't, when you have a problem going on, you can't investigate yourself. You can't investigate yourself. If there's a police matter, if there's a congressional matter, Congress can't investigate themselves. They can't. They want to, but they can't. So my reasoning for supporting an investigation, and even, let me, let me back up and go a little further with this, let's just say Sam and Carly are gonna be in, in on the investigation, Charlie, sorry, Carly. I'm thinking that, that the lead investigator should have first and foremost priority to say on what should be being done. It, the first and foremost priority investigator should be an outside person with y'all having some input. That, that only seems fair. In other words, I don't, I don't think y'all should say, "No, we don't gonna do it that way." And, uh, and hey, we can even include Stephen in on that. I just think, I don't, I don't know exactly how often y'all all meet together.
No, we can't.
You can't meet together at all, ever? Hey, even on Zoom?
Correct.
It's gotta be, uh, work, it's gotta be, uh, a work, uh, oh, yeah, or open meeting, or it has, uh, have a, um, what do you call the, yeah, the special session, uh, special session or whatnot, yeah.
Sam, that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about, for you coming up with this prop, this proposal.
Yeah.
Do you even have a chance to talk to all of them, or you just send out an email and hope that they get back with you in four or five days?
Well, yeah, no, you, you just have to send an email out.
Okay, see, then, so in other words, there's no way for all five councilmen to get together, just maybe even a 30-minute?
No.
There's no way.
It's gotta be a public or something that's, uh, go in executive session, that's what I was talking about, or something like that.
You want us to not talk to each other, because then we create votes that...
No, no, I do want you to talk.
It's, it's good government.
When you get up here, four or five, or one or three, we're gonna argue, and basically wasting our time seeing y'all argue, because y'all can't make up your mind on what y'all want to do. Then when y'all get ready to vote, you wind up having three votes, two down, and it's just, it's poor planning. It's poor planning. The proposition, the proposal that you're coming up with is not etched in concrete, it's just a proposal, and when y'all come up with a proposal with an outside source that's, that sanctions it and says, "Yeah, this is a good idea," that's when you come and vote in front of everybody else, in front of all of us.
Exactly, that, that's kinda what this was, I was taking it as a scope of work that was presented, and then at some point in time, we were gonna get somebody that is gonna be the top two or three that's gonna be looked at, and then they're gonna have a more detailed scope of work that's gonna be ironed out, and we'd have to vote on that engaging.
Okay, so, that, that's...
That's, that was, that was where I, I started at.
And again, y'all, y'all need to know, we as a city appreciate y'all very much. Thank you.
So just one quick question, by no means am I an attorney, Mr. Kudran, but if they voted for an investigation on August 27th, and now it's a presentation of a scope, why would they need four votes for the scope of an investigation when they had already?
Because, because the charter requires a investigation for a specific purpose, and what the council did was say, "Okay, we're gonna have an investigation, we'll deal with the purpose later." And this was an effort to get the purpose, this, this is what we're talking about, what is the scope, because that's important, and the charter, that provision of the charter does require that it's gotta be for a specified purpose, all investigations, that's section 2.06, and that requires two-thirds of the membership, 2.06 in the charter.
Okay, so when, on the 27th, they voted for, what did they vote for?
To have an investigation, but there was no specific purpose identified, and the idea was...
It was the Bill, the Building Department.
Right.
That was a special sub-purpose, we were in Building Department, it seems like you're getting tied up in litigation here against, against what was there, what not was there, trying to, whatever you're trying to do on that, but that was, you're right, I'm glad you brought that up, we already voted unanimously on an investigation.
So this is what it says, "A resolution," this is August 27th, "a resolution to open an investigation into the Building Department office regarding any and all matters related to permits." That sounds like specified purpose. Okay?
That, that's, I agree.
That's not, that's not this resolution.
This is a scope of work, but it's already been opened up, it's already been opened up.
It's more than just permits.
No, building office related, and then it's other stuff to con, to conduct investigation pursuant, independent audit, certify a public accountant or firm, it, it actually goes into further detail, I'm just summarizing. So if they voted for a specified purpose on August 27th, and that, now they're voting on a scope, I wouldn't think they need four votes. I mean, you're the attorney, but I wouldn't think they need four votes, and if that's the way it goes, I would encourage you to hire an attorney to challenge that decision or get an advisory opinion from the Attorney General.
And that's...
That's not any angst against your city attorney, but if you voted for a specified purpose on August 27th, and now you have a scope before you, then that's the scope. I mean, I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm challenging that decision.
Understood, I'm happy to request an opinion from the Attorney General on, on where we are.
And, and that, that is a scope there, and like I said, I mean, to hire professional services, we need three, two votes, Andre, or, 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 or four to one, to hire professional services?
So, so...
If I wanna hire, if we wanna hire an attorney to get an opinion, since we may need to, because you, your opinion is, is what you just said, so to hire an attorney to, to look at your opinion, isn't it a three, two vote?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure on that, because I, because that's, that's your opinion on that, which I think now that I'm glad you said it, it's pretty clear to me that the, the vote was unanimously, unanimous, 5-0, when that came in, this is a scope of work, so I, I don't, you know...
So, yeah, the meeting minutes, there's a motion by Councilman Andrews to second, seconded by Councilman Divertorio to move forward with opening investigation into the Building Department, and the scope will be determined at future meetings. I don't know what the resolution says, that's what the minutes say. Obviously, Ms. Wells read the actual resolution.
The resolution was changed at the meeting, remember, there was discussion, and there was discussion about where we're going, and that resolution that was presented was actually changed, and that is what was adopted in...
Boy, I tell you, well, you know what this shows tonight? They all know there's some serious issues in that Building Department office, because if you heard this guy here, Charles Administrator, one more time, one more time, we doing stuff, and the city attorney is just trying his best to litigate this stuff, to try to make sure that it's been, that is how serious this is, and I hope you're all paying attention to that, and it's not a personal thing, this is a real serious issue that we all need to be paying attention to, is how serious bad activities are going on in that permit office, they are scared to get something done and it pulled up. This is, this is unreal, right here, tonight, unreal.
I already said my name, so how many issues do y'all vote on that you have to have four votes? Because I was under the impression that when you had a city council, and you got five, the third vote always supposed to make the final solution, so why they got certain things that's in the audience, so maybe we need to look at the audience, too, y'all.
It's the charter.
It's the charter.
Charter, whatever it is, maybe y'all need to start getting that changed for the city of Hammond, because it looks like it's got a lot of things to make show that the city of Hammond always come out on top, and not the people. I mean, the officials, I'm gonna put it like that, the people that's in high office instead of the people of the community, because you all represent the people of the community. And I heard this young lady here said that she, um, kinda think for her people, because y'all set up in this situation as he asked her, that's why he asked her, when she decided not to, which I knew she wouldn't, because she's the one that took the four things out that she didn't wanna vote on, and so normally those two are gonna go together, and that's gonna stop something from happening.
Till you start voting different, if Steve vote before her, he wouldn't know how to vote, but by him voting after her, he have...
Point of order, I, we can have decorum here. Y'all, I, I don't wanna hear all that, Councilman.
All right, resolution number nine.
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract, excuse me, with Mosley's Lawn and Garden for demolition services at 107 North Cherry Street, Hammond, Louisiana, in the amount of $45,000. Charles Wasser.
Thank you. Um, we opened bids on, um, August 20th, uh, there were, I believe, 10 proposers, uh, those are summarized on the attachment to the agenda. Um, this is the demo of the building that's, um, just across the street here from, um, our utility billing, uh, department. Um, the, the two lowest bids, uh, my understanding is the lowest bidder had an issue with insurance, uh, the second lowest bidder was approached, they declined, um, to contract with the city, and so we moved on to the third lowest bidder in the amount of 45,000. This is within the budget for the demolition services, um, so we're asking the council to, uh, approve it, so we can move forward with the project.
Just one minute on it, uh, go ahead, Sam.
I just got, uh, one question, Charles, is this, uh, person in Tansford Parish, or is he in the city of Hammond that got the bid?
I, I don't have the answer to that, um...
Who is Mosley, I mean, who are they?
He one of the guys that be cutting the grass for the city.
Really?
Yes, sir. So I'm quite sure he got the insurance in order to do this, uh, job.
I just wanted to know, because I mean, that's $45,000, and, uh, I don't know who Mosley is, and I thought you, you know, you would be, would...
I, I, I'm not familiar with, with the particular company. I, I, I know that they were the lowest bid, and as, and to Councilman, uh, Wells's point, I do know that they have met all of the insurance requirements, um, to, to address the project.
Okay, so you can't answer what I asked, other words, huh? I just asked a simple question. I just asked a simple question. Are they associated with the city of Hammond or anything like this?
I believe I've answered the question, I don't, I'm not familiar with the company, I, I-
What about the, uh, council, is anybody on the council familiar with, with Mosley?
Yeah, I'd have heard of him before, yeah, he tore down one of the wrong houses on, what, Center Street, and, uh-
Oh, was, was that, was that, was that him?
That's, that's him.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't know that, yeah, that was a while back, we're repeating, I guess, the same, but that was a guy, I guess, a while back that tore down the wrong house, I, I didn't know that, but yeah.
In Sam district.
In my district, yeah, it's been a while.
Well, here we go again.
Yeah.
You know, this is amazing. The council has no idea who they spending that forty-five thousand dollars with. Charles now got put in a position where, you know, he's gotta present, since the mayor's not here, and, uh, and we fight, fussing and fighting about this, you know, this, this resolution. Now, have, let's, I, I, I'm still, uh, really mixed up, because y'all, are y'all getting anything done? The, the council, are y'all getting anything done besides three to two? And then the next thing you know, the, you gotta have four to one, which is kinda, in my book, I thought three to two was, uh, good in, in, in anything that the council agreed upon, until, uh, Mr. Andre corrected it. So, uh, I don't know, we gonna keep pushing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sal. On this here, Mr. Charles, I must just say this here, we got bided property in our community. I must say, President Kip, and I know, I got these ragly houses and everything else in my community, but it's amazing how we can find money on Coleman Avenue, right by Z Mary Park, they tore that building down. And for two years, if I'm not mistaken, President Kip, you might can help me out, what house been tore down in your area in two years?
I was just about to ask the question, oh, we gonna get a demo list, it's been a while.
Yeah, and it's coming out the building permit office, but guess what, nobody see nothing wrong with it. Uh, we had a house they tore down by the airport, way in the woods, nobody could find. They tore that house down, uh, coming out the building permit office. And now, we bout to tear something down on Cherry Street, and it's amazing how the city can get their projects done, and once again, uh, Councilman Kip, I know he have houses in his areas need to be tore down, I have houses in my area need to be tore down, but it's amazing how they never meet the budget.
I do too, yeah, mine, I, yeah.
Well, we all, all, well, most, the majority of us have houses in our area need to be tore down. I was looking at the parish, how they plans and what they been doing, tore down a hundred houses, and I'm like, well, darn, well, seem like somebody oughta pay attention to what the parish doing. So, if they doing that, why we can't get it done, but when it come to the administration, and y'all do have a problem, because it's amazing how we can vote pretty much everything dealing with the administration, especially the airport, airport get more things than anybody I know, and yet, we can't get nothing done in our area. So, I have nothing against the guy tearing this building down, Mosley or whatever, but I do have a problem when, uh, they tearing stuff down in our area that's not being completed, not being done the right way. Mr. Isaac tore the building down by Z Mary Park, and honestly, I can't say that's the first project I saw tore down and was done the correct way. And that's what I've been asking for, for the longest, for the last six years, I've been asking for the same thing, when you tear something down in my district, when you tear something down in President Kip's district, do it the right way, so when anybody need to go in there and cut grass, or whatever they need to do, they not gonna tear their equipment up, that the city hire these same guys to go in there to cut grass, and they tearing up their equipment for no reason at all, so I have nothing against the contract or nothing else, but let's just do it just like Mr. Isaac did it, when he tore the building down by Z Mary Park, and we all know what building I'm talking about. That's it for me.
Anyone else? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Resolution number ten.
A resolution to approve annual alcohol renewals for twenty twenty-five, Charles Barsher.
Go through one second, um, so this is a list, uh, the council's provided a list, the public's provided a list of existing, um, alcohol permitted, uh, businesses. Um, this is what we do with you every, every year, we come to the council and ask for your approval to go ahead and submit the notices for those renewals, these are existing licenses, they are not new licenses.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio? Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Divertorio?
I don't know what we're voting on.
Number ten.
Ten.
Number ten, the alcohol renewals.
This is a resolution to approve us notifying existing alcohol permit, uh, business, alcohol permitted businesses, um, allows us to send them the notices to, uh, renew their permits. No new permits, it's existing only.
Well, I know it's not right, because you got one ten on there that the city took their license, so that shouldn't even be on there, for one thing. So, we know it's not an update.
Y'all need to remove that one?
Oh, they didn't remove it.
Or what, it was a particular business, Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir, thank you, one ten, one ten. Found it.
Page three.
Page three.
Right up under the troops, something.
You said it was on page three, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it.
I think it's page three. Two of three. Wait, on page two, I'm sorry.
Page two.
Yeah.
This is the list that came directly from accounting, um, we can definitely check to make sure if, if, if that business is no longer open, um, then they obviously wouldn't receive a permit, permit renewal.
Well, Andre, can I ask this question?
Oh, you said one ten LLC, yes, right here, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Andre, should we remove that one out and move forward with the other?
You can, you can move to a, a man, remove that item.
All right, I make an amendment that we remove, uh, what is this, one ten LLC out of this, uh, group? And move forward with the other groups that are on this list.
So, you're making a motion basically to amend it to remove one ten?
Right.
What about those convenience stores that's been reapplying for license? That, uh, no longer have license, or Marshawn, they done, they done redid their license three times. Are they in there?
So, my understanding from accounting is that this list is currently permitted businesses. If, if it's, uh, if it's not a business that currently has a permit in the business name, the same owner, et cetera, they would come to the council like they normally do individually to get their permit. This is simply to notify that existing businesses that have permits, that their permit's about to expire, they need to renew the permit, but we require council approval to do that. If, if the council wants to amend this list, to remove a business that you, you aware has closed, um, we can do that, and then we will send the notices to the other businesses, excluding that one that has closed.
Can I ask a question? On the first vote, Councilman Divertorio never voted, so that erases that and create a new?
Which, um-
So, that one, number nine, you called for the vote, he was first absent, and then came back in before the vote was completed.
But he never voted, and then we said we was amending it, so do we vote on that and then make an amendment? I'm just trying to understand for records.
So, so Kip is now making a motion, substitute motion to remove one ten LLC, right, out of the, out of the approval list? So, we need a second for that, to vote on that.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
See, I don't know what I'm voting on now.
Oh, you're just, you're just removing one, you're just removing one ten from the list, Councilman.
Make stink.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
So, now, now you have up to approve them removing one ten, and that, that would be a, a new motion.
I make a motion? To-
Yeah, to approve all of this.
To approve that list, yeah.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Resolution number eleven.
Oh, Jesus. A resolution to-
Don't fall, please.
Listen, Michelle Kendall couldn't make it tonight, I'm Todd Delon, I am, uh-
Hold on, she's gotta read it.
I'm so sorry.
You jumped up too fast, he could've waited a while.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law for railroad, railroad war from five to, five to eight P M. on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, in Railroad Park.
Okay, I'm Todd, uh, I sit on the board of directors for the DDD, I'm here in Michelle's place because she couldn't make it tonight, and I wanna make this blanket statement, it'll save us a lot of time, uh, resolutions eleven through fifteen all involve events that are already on the book, and we're asking for container exceptions and the ability for alcohol to be served at these events, which this is pretty standard, so I'm sure you guys have done this for several years in a row, but that's all I wanted to make a statement on.
Anyone else from the public? Matter of fact, stay right up here, sir, yeah. Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution twelve.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Downtown Development District to serve, sell, and otherwise handle alcohol, the Farmers Market Fall Fest, on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from eight A M. to twelve P M. in Railroad Park.
And same as before, one event already on the books, we're just asking for permission.
Anyone from the public? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Thirteen.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law for the Farmers Market Fall Fest on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from eight A M. to twelve P M. in Railroad Park.
Same.
Anyone from the public? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Fourteen.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Downtown Development District to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during Starry Saturday, on Saturday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, from eight A M. to nine P M. The event boundaries are Magnolia Street, Robert Street, Cherry Street, and Coleman Avenue.
Again, the same, this one's for Starry November night.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure to counsel?
Motion to approve, second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Fifteen.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law for Starry Saturdays, on Saturday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, from eight A M. to nine P M.
Same.
Same.
And once again, the same.
Public comment? Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon? Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you.
I must say, good night, guys, thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, let's go back to page three, resolution number one.
All right, so, resolution number one. A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Did It Planet Clothing Company, held on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve P M. to seven P M. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two hundred West Charles Street, Alec Griffith.
I'm Alec Griffith, uh, with We Didn't Planet, two oh nine Blackburn Road, my apologies for missing the beginning. Um, I'm just here on behalf of Benny's and myself, I've been here a few times, uh, this is our fifth one at the park, so I've been here in the past, asking for the same thing with Benny's, um, so I'm just here to ask permission. Again, we're already booked on the schedule with the city, so just asking for permission here.
What park?
It's Kate Square.
Okay, I see it right here, I'm sorry.
I, I have had some comments previously about people thinking they didn't like your music, and then they called me and said, you know what, it's, it's just a preference, there's nothing wrong with it, they liked your event. So, uh, the neighborhood has been happy with the event, and so I'm glad to see that it ends at seven P M., though, that we don't want it too late, yes.
Anyone else from the public? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the city of Hammond's open container law to Benny's Place during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Did It Planet Clothing Company, held on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve P M. to seven P M. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two zero zero West Charles Street.
Same thing.
All right, public comment? Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Thank you.
Thank you, you have a great night.
Reports, mayor's office?
No report.
Counsel?
Uh, Charles, can you check and get an update for me on the, uh, study that we did on the flood study for the city of Hammond? They should be finished with the second phase by now, because it should've been done earlier this year.
We, we actually reached out, the mayor actually reached out to, um, the consultant, I wanna say it was Friday of last week, I think that's correct. Um, my understanding from that call was in his office when he made the call, is that I, I think we're at the point where they've submitted the data to FEMA, and we're kind of in that waiting zone, but, um, we, we have a call into them already, we're waiting for them to kind of refer back to us with, you know, where, where exactly-
I think we were supposed to have some type of update from y'all given to us, not just, uh, whatever y'all say kind of thing, but it'd be nice if y'all got some type of report, uh, to present, or call the guy that we paid to do the study, to come to the council meeting or whatnot, and give us an update on where we at. That'd be great.
Okay, to be clear, do you want me to ask?
Ask him like we have in the past and before, the consultant, to try to give us some like little report of where he's at right now with the deal.
Okay, do, do you, I, what I'm trying to clarify is, do you want the consultant at the next council meeting? Or do you want a report from the consultant? Or do you want both?
That'd be great if he can come to the council meeting, the next council meeting, and give us a update of where he's at, because it's been over a year since he's came, just with any type of update.
Yeah, he previously had a slideshow, and FEMA, we were able to share the slideshow with people, so if he could do that, that'd be great. I thought that was part of stage two anyway, so, um-
Earlier this year, yeah.
I'm kind of confused why it got submitted to FEMA, because I thought we were supposed to see it first.
Exactly.
When we reached out, when the mayor reached out to the consultant last Friday, um, the individual who's the lead in the study was unavailable, so we spoke to a member of the staff. So, they were kind of trying to provide what they knew, I, to my knowledge, the mayor has not got a call back from the consultant, but we will follow, I will follow up with the consultant, find out where we are. I will ask if we can have some type of report presentation to the council at the next council meeting, and have an appearance by the consultant, so we're all on the same page about where we are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counsel reports, yes. Two weeks ago, at the council meeting, I think I got a little bit of- Two weeks ago, at the council meeting, I think I got a little bit out of hand and I want to apologize to Mr. Andre. He asked me a question, and he know the question that he asked me, and yes, I do. But, and I want to apologize to the mayor, even though he had a family emergency tonight. And that's something I don't do too often, apologize, but if I'm wrong, I'm always apologize. But I will say this here, Councilman Steve, when we talking about those mailboxes, are anybody standing up here for my counsel report? If you don't want to hear what they say, you can leave, because let me tell you something about me. I'm very passionate about my district. I got a lot of passion for the city of Hammond, so when someone speaking or talking about District Three, those little moves you be making, all that stuff, yeah, it makes me mad. But when somebody from your district stand up here and talk from being flooded to anything, guess what I do? I sit here and I take it in, because I wouldn't want my house to flood. I wouldn't want to have those issues they having. So a lot of things, and it's personal between all of us, and you all don't know, but it's personal, and you know what? Somehow, the city gonna always win, but at the end, the taxpayers, it's costing the taxpayers money. We can sit here and get a street sweeper, three hundred some thousand dollars. How many times the city councilman requested for streets to be cleaned? You know, we sit here and get a stump grinder. Nobody say nothing about money when it come to buying stuff for the city. But when we come talk about investigation to these departments, we love to say, what about this, what about that? Yeah, we need to sit down and talk, because whoever the next administration is, look at the hell that they gonna catch if we don't clean this up. And we got opportunity to clean it up now, because from everything been going on, the booking room incident, it was brought up tonight. No, there wasn't under our watch, but guess what? We tried to clean it up. And a lot of things we can do, because I say this here now, the person who ever take my place, and it gonna happen. I want them to see and have the same passion that I feel about District Three. Chappa Pila Park, just brought to my attention tonight. Chappa Pila Park is in my district. Nothing, nothing Chappa Pila Park need, because you know why? We did a tax to make sure all the money go to Chappa Pila Park and what they need. Mooney Park needs some of everything. Yeah, I'm not gonna say, hell, yeah. It looks better from when I first got in office. Yeah, it looks good, but guess what? We still to have to make improvements. Charles know, and I know, Mooney Park need a lot, so we can sit here and act like ain't nothing going on. The same thing Chappa Pila Park, Kate Park have, I would like to have. Without me having to ask ten time, Mr. Charles, what's going on? Ms. Lisa, I have to send her email. Ms. Lisa, what's going on with this here? What's going on there? I just want the same respect as we treat the other parks. And in my park, it's in a poor district. It's in, it was in bad shape, and I thank you everything, Mr. Charles, that you doing, but in the meantime, you took this position to be a part of the administration. And now you see, yeah, you been over there working in the building permit office, but it be done if y'all don't have a lot of problems over there. For Mr. Campbell, I appreciate what you said. Thank you for coming out. You know, these questions need to be asked. And for the other councilmen, we have to get a hope to this stuff. I mean, it's messing up. Ms. Gonzalez, I'm gonna call your name out. It's amazing how when you play attorney, when you want to be attorney, and I thought, and I'm gonna say it again, I looked at you as a real bright person, that you gonna do one right and wrong. When we first got up here, you and I used to talk all the time and stuff. I'm that same person, but now you see the passion that I have for the city of Hammond and District Three. So if I have to flip this table over, I will when it come to District Three. So I don't care who say something, if you're not saying nothing good about District Three, don't say nothing at all, because you don't stay over there, you either help us make it better or stay the hell away from there. The mayor sit there and contacted me about putting cameras on live vote. I thought it was a good idea. But like always, stuff be said to me for me to keep my mouth closed. Do the things that we gonna say we gonna do. We need cameras in the park. All the cameras working in the park. Mr. Sam, he got issues going on his park, you know, uh, uh, the kids, the adults tearing up the stuff in the park. What sense do it make to have cameras in the park and they not be monitored? The city monitoring the mall, if they can monitor Hammer Square Mall, why they can't monitor our parks like they monitor Hammer Square Mall? Anytime somebody get caught stealing, we all see it. We need that for these parks, because guess what? The mall got insurance. These parks apparently don't have no insurance, so why are we replacing things that we shouldn't have to replace? So I say that, Mr. Charles, I, I appreciate everything you doing, and I'm always gonna say you can do a little bit better when it come to District Three, you know, with them grants and everything else. But I just want to apologize once again, Mr. Andre, and you tell Mr. Patrick that I apologize. And Mr. Mayor, I know he not here, but I know he sitting down watching, or he gonna hear about it. So I want to apologize to the mayor and the rest of the city councilmen. Y'all know how I feel. If you don't know how I feel, it's the love that I have for my area. Born and raised, yeah, we see changes, but guess what? It's seventy years behind. I cannot do it by myself. I need y'all support. When y'all ask for things in y'all district, what I do, vote on it. Not one time I'm gonna ask, well, why you ask for that sidewalk? Why you ask for that cover? Not one time I'm gonna ask that. I don't, if y'all need it in your district, get it. The things that I ask for in my district, I don't have to sit here and let y'all question me for everything I do. Ride through there and see. Ride through there. We got a problem with these lights, these street lights. A lot of lights are out. I asked this here, and I'm gonna ask again, please, send someone out to ride and see what street lights are out. It don't make sense for the city paying, now here we go again, the city paying for these lights and they not even working. We got a light on the corner of Phoenix Avenue and J W Davis that's out. I shouldn't have to ride. We got a light on Mooney Park that's out. I shouldn't have to ride myself to see what's lights are working and what's lights are not working. The city can do this here every quarter. We paying for this here, guess what? Taxpayer's money and the lights don't even work. Thank you.
Real quick, Sal, did they install that sign over there on Alida? The, the road sign they ordered for Alida that Pete Nicolosi did they? Have they installed it yet over there? Okay. Charles, can you check on, they were supposed to order, I think, two signs for there?
Yeah, I'll check.
And then also check on the no parking sign that was supposed to be installed over there on Barnes, Barnes Avenue, Barnes Street on the sidewalk. They parking the cars on the sidewalk, so the lady across the street wanted a sign that was, should have been done a while back. I went in there earlier today and I didn't see it, so. Maybe they took it down, but I don't know if it's been installed or yet not, so, thank you.
Any other reports? They got a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Meeting adjourned.